And as everyone knows, this is extraordinarily important for the Chesterfield County Schools. And we have great candidates here this evening. And I just want to talk a little bit first about how the evening is going to proceed. We're going to start with a 90-second introduction of each candidate. Later on, they'll have a 60-second for a closing statement. Overall, there'll be five what we call full-length questions with three districts responding to each question. So the questions will rotate evenly between the districts. So each district will answer a total of three questions, and each candidate will get one minute to answer that question. We've asked the candidates to remember it's a forum, not a debate, and we're asking them to refrain from confronting the person next to them verbally and/or physically. Each candidate has also allotted one wild card. So if the candidate hears a question that is not addressed to their district, but they have a burning desire to answer it, at the end of each set of questions, I'll ask if anybody would like to use their wild card, and they have the opportunity to do that. After those five questions, we're going to have what we call a short lightning round, where we'll have three questions where I'll ask for either a yes or no answer or an answer that can be presented within 15 seconds of each candidate. After that, there'll be a couple of questions in which we'll ask every candidate on the stage to answer within 30 seconds. And then finally, we should have some time for questions from the audience. The chamber and the burper are going to collect them. They're going to try to make sure that they're targeted toward a general question and not toward any particular candidate as well. So that's what we'll do. We're going to have a wonderful evening. We should be taking about two hours total for the event. And we're going to begin with the opening statements. We're going to have Patrick Green from Midlothian to begin. Patrick? Yeah, we're going to ask everybody to pass the mics. And as they told me, there's the buzzer question.
Fair writer. Great. Good evening. My name is Patrick Green. I'm asking to be your Midlothian School Board Representative. I'd like to introduce myself by telling a story about my background. I had freshman year of college, I was a walk-on to the University of Rivers' football team. And two weeks into that season, our country was attacked by a Taliban. I remember I had to practice that afternoon. One of our coaches was taking me aside and telling me, "Say, no matter what's going on in the world, we need to focus on what's important. That's the game we have on Saturday." That didn't sit well with me, just like I know it doesn't sit well with me here right now. So I quit the football team, joined the Army ROTC program, completion of my college degree and submission as the second lieutenant in the Army, cleared my law degree, served about eight years back in the United States Army, completed tours in Iraq and Afghanistan. We need real leaders on our school board, ladies and gentlemen. I live in my practical, relevant experience as a leader in our community as a youth lacrosse coach, a trial attorney, and a major in US Army Reserves, and being asked to the school board to make sure we get things moving on track, with consistent quality services. Thank you.
Our second candidate is Catherine Haynes from Midlothian. And if anybody wants to remain seated, you can do that as well. Yeah, no, just keep it going, yeah.
Okay. Hi. I am Catherine Haynes. My neighbors asked me to run the school board, and I said yes. I said yes because my lifetime has been committed to community building and public service. And that started when I first schools, when my now sixteen-year-old entered a pre-K, public pre-K program in Washington DC. I said yes because I have a master's degree in urban planning and policy, and policymaking is the number-one job of a school board member. I have used my policymaking skills already in Suriel County to support our students who speak English as a second language and increase access, and also to increase access to our gifted programs. I said yes because I have four kids. I have kids at the elementary, middle, and high school level. I have a kid who receives special education services. I've been in the Center Based Gifted Program. I have a kid who loves school and hates school, so I'm pretty sure that I can connect to somebody like you, and it is creating these connections and build a stronger community together. It takes work. It's not just about me.
Move to Denisea Ponce from Midlothian.
I'd like to be the first candidate to remain seated. My name is Denisea Ponce. I am the candidate for the Midlothian District School Board. I have a degree, a bachelor's in science in therapy and rehabilitation, and a master's in healthcare administration. I am currently employed by the Virginia Department of the Payroll, Health, and Development Services. I also have been a volunteer for an extensive amount of time and years here in Chesterfield County. I am currently serving my third year on the Chesterfield County Schools Equity Committee. I have formerly served as the two-term vice president of the Chesterfield NAACP and Education Chair. My role with the Virginia Department of the Payroll, Health, and Development Services is a policy review specialist. I think with my community involvement and my activism in the community, not only for your students, your families, and your teachers, I think that will be an asset to our board, someone who has reached across the aisles with our state legislators, as well as our current board members as imperative. I also know the importance, and I have also partnered with other organizations in order to get needs met of our current students in our school. I believe in fostering partnerships, and I believe in building relationships. I would like for you to continue to possess that time. Okay, thanks.
Ryan Harper. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Ryan Harper, and I'm also running for the Midlothian seat on the Chesterfield County School Board. As a teacher in our school system, I've seen what happens in a classroom day in and day out, the relationships you make with students and other faculties, and really see how a school functions as a whole. As a parent of four children in our school, one in high school, two in middle school, and one in elementary school, sometimes I share a lot of my frustration, whether it be from transportation, could be from school safety standards, or even just some curriculum that's going on in school. So I'm trying to keep the schools moving in the right direction. All of our schools are accredited. For a large school system, that does speed volumes, but there are things that need fixed, our transportation. We need to make sure that we have an effective budget that tackles maintenance concerns, a budget that takes care of our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our bus drivers. And we need to make sure that our schools have the most security-conscious devices in place, making sure that we're able to see entrances in and out of the schools, making sure that we're able to keep people from coming in and out of the schools that should be there. I plan to work with the Board of Supervisors and state legislators to make sure that we can keep moving our schools in the right direction. Thank you.
Go to the Dale District, Matt Shepard.
How you doing? My name is Dr. Shepard McCall. I have a bachelor's in psychology, I have a master's in counseling, and I have a doctorate in counseling, psychology, and education. I'm a counselor and psychologist. I currently teach at Virginia State University. We're an associate professor of psychology, worked there for 15 years, and I've been in education for over 15 years. My wife, Dr. Shannon McCall, is in education also, and I have a son, Shepard McCall III, that matriculated through Dale Schools. He matriculated through Dale Schools, and he graduated from the Helsibur in 2017, and he's currently attending Virginia State University. And he's a junior psychology major following in my footsteps previously. And as you can see, education is very important to me. As you know, my family has a lot of education, and I've been in education for over 25 years. The reason that I decided to run is I want to be a change agent. I want to be a voice from the community and the students to the school board. And I just want to do a good job, and I believe that I will work hard, I will represent the constituents, and I will be a 15 player as I play college football. So I enjoy sports, I enjoy getting along with others. I think that I have an amicable personality. And again, I get along with others, and I just want to make a change and make a difference in our school systems. And I look forward to you all voting for me on November 14th. Thank you so much. Debbie Dale.
Hi, I'm Debbie Natalee, and I'm running for the Dale District. I'd like to thank the chamber and the observers for this opportunity to let the voters know that I am the most qualified candidate due to my 34 years of teaching, all in Chesterfield County Schools. I'm a product of Chesterfield County Schools. My husband and I, after college, decided to raise our children here. We have two children, Sarah and Jake, and it's my role as Sarah's mother that makes me uniquely qualified for this position, as she has cerebral palsy and has spent her life in a wheelchair. I fought the battles that many families fight when raising a special-needs child. I worked to ensure that Sarah and all students had opportunities and resources that they could access. As a board member, though, my first priority would be to bring some finality to the transportation and maintenance issues so that we can get back to the business of education. I want to focus on students and learning, not maintenance and transportation. I want to transition away from high-stakes SOL tests to a growth-based model of assessment so we can return to more learning in our classrooms and less testing. I want to empower our teachers to be creative and have the autonomy to take back their classrooms. We need to embrace our teachers and support them, and that begins with raising teacher's salaries to the national average. I was humbled and honored to be named the 2015 Middle School Teacher of the Year, but we have many fabulous teachers that we need to support. Thank you, and I look forward to tonight's discussion.
Move to Cloverhill, Justin Smith.
Hello, my name is Justin Smith. I was born and raised right here in Chesterfield County. My mom taught in Chesterfield. She's actually a retired Chesterfield County teacher. I'm running for school board because my education and my career makes me uniquely qualified for this position. Prior to my career in law and public policy, I worked in construction. I understand why we need to work on maintenance, make sure we're paying as we go so we don't incur large costs later on. Once I moved into the law and public policy, I've spent a better part of a decade in. I worked at the VRS, and there I was their program manager for appeals. I'm intimately familiar with the retirement system, and most of our teachers are vested in, that I myself am vested in. I worked there with the board that was in charge of maintaining a $72 billion retirement fund. I've worked with boards, I've worked with large budgets. Currently, I work in IT for the Department of Medical Assistance Services, so I understand the need for the technical resources for our students and what's going to make them valuable in the workforce if that's the direction they need to go. But most of our jobs are heading in that direction. We need to make sure that we're educating our children for once they leave the Chesterfield school system. Most importantly, I'm a father. I have three kids, two are in the school system right now, and I coach my son's rugby team. Family is very important to me, and I want to do the best for our children. I look forward to our conversation this evening. Thanks.
Erica Phillips.
Good evening. My name is Erica Phillips, and I am running for school board in the Cloverhill District. I am running because I believe that every child should receive an equitable education. What that means is that they should not be educated based on their race, their religion, their social, economic status, their sexual orientation, their zip code. None of those things should affect the education they receive. I believe that children should be educated based on their talents, their needs, their abilities, and goals. I believe that I am the most qualified candidate based on the fact that I have a undergraduate degree in education, a master's in nonprofit studies, which includes public policy and fiscal management and budgeting. I have been a part of the Cloverhill community since I was a child. I grew up in Chesterfield. My children are being raised in Chesterfield. I have one child who has graduated from Chesterfield Schools, and I have a child who has special needs. During that fight of getting her the services that she needed, I learned a lot, and I realized that families needed people to advocate for them. My husband and I started a nonprofit in Chesterfield, which is in the schools, and we provide tutoring, homework help, life skills, and multiple resources for families. I'm running because I believe in our community, and I believe that everyone should have a voice. Thank you.
Don Heffron.
Good evening. I'm Don Heffron, and I am also running for the Cloverhill seat on the Chesterfield School Board. I want to tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up in Chesterfield County, in the Cloverhill District, as a matter of fact. I graduated from Monakin, class of 1994. And together with my husband, nineteen years, we are raising our three wonderful children, all of whom attend the same schools I did when I grew up. I taught at Providence Middle School, I taught seven as a tutor, helping our students who were learning English as a foreign language. And I'm proud to have served our community as the chair of the Special Education Advisory Committee. The SEAC acts as a liaison between families of children who receive special education services and the school board itself. I'm also proud to say that I have been endorsed by the Chesterfield Education Association as well as the Richmond Association of Realtors. Both of these professional organizations recognize that my vision for our county of supporting our teachers as well as providing the resources where necessary for every child to succeed in every corner of our county, benefit our community as a whole. I have a long track record of public service, and I am running, I am running to have the opportunity to continue my commitment to our community and to give back to the community that has given so much to me and my family. Thank you.
Move to the Bermuda District, Ann Coker.
Good evening. I'm Ann Coker, and thank you all for having us here this evening. My experience in life and as well as work and interaction with the CCPS school system is why the voters should have trust in me, put their trust in me, to be the next Bermuda District School Board Representative. I've lived in Chesterfield County my entire life. I am a product of Chesterfield County Schools, graduated from Thomas Dale in 1993. My husband Jason is a firefighter, and we have four wonderful children who all attend Chesterfield County Schools, one in high school, middle school, and two in elementary school. I have the parents' perspective of our schools, and I will be able to relate to their concerns. As the vice president and president of Enon Elementary CTO, I have a firsthand understanding and working with parents as well as hearing teachers' concerns and fostering relationships with our community so that I can be the best representative for the district. I'm also involved in our local church and scouting in my career as an accounting manager at ITAC, which is an engineering and construction company. I work with budgets on a daily basis. I know how to manage, how to make sure that we're staying within budget and that we're being accountable for our budget. Also create processes and procedures for our county on a daily basis. I will bring my work experience, my problem-solving skills to the school board, and I thank you for your time.
Will Ares.
Can you hear me? My name is Will Ares, and I'm running for the Bermuda School Board seat. I'm a product of Chesterfield County Schools. I grew up right here in this district. I've been in this city many times. I have four younger siblings. We all are part of Chesterfield County. I graduated from Thomas Dale in 2015. And so I believe that I have a unique perspective on the school board as somebody who recently graduated. I have an innate ability to describe how, sorry, sorry. As a prior to the schools, I have been there, I lived it, I saw it, but also through my involvement with local nonprofit organizations, sitting on the Board of Directors for the Chesterfield YMCA, and being an active member of the community, I think that I have what it takes to make sure that the county moves in the right direction. Our teachers need better pay, our bus drivers need proper incentives to stay in the county. We need to move away from standardized testing. And I think the evidence is there that shows that if we find a board that will work well with our board supervisors, we can accomplish so many things that the county is looking forward to. I can't wait to announce this discussion, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks very much. So we're now going to move to the first question. We're going to start with Midlothian and Ryan Harper, and then we're going to move after we, after Midlothian to Bermuda and Cloverhill with this question. The number of students from low-income families is increasing with more and more students on free and reduced-price lunch. Research has shown that year-round schools, such as Bellwood and Fallen Creek Elementary, can lead to improved academic progress for lower-income students. Would you support expanding the year-round calendar to all Title I schools? And Ryan Harecurst.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, it's an interesting question because I see it from both sides, and there is a deficit, especially with low-income families, with keeping those students in school year-round and having short breaks. That also helps with teacher burnout also. I would be cautious of fully implementing it without taking a look at all the statistics over a three- or four-year period, seeing how the schools perform, what does the data show, and also how does the community respond to it. And if the community responds positively to it, I would have no problem opening up to ask the rest of the community if it's something that they would consider, but I think that's something that the community should have been able to. Denisea.
Yes, I think with all things taken into consideration, we definitely need to look at the benefits as well as the disadvantages. I feel as though we need to do some things that are different in our processes and think a little bit outside of the box. I would be willing to support year-round schools. I think it offers advantages, such as our teachers being able to receive income year-round. In addition to it, it would also help a lot of our families who have social, economic issues. It also would be an asset for our community to encourage our students' learning abilities, especially when we're looking at our reading test scores. So it is definitely something that I am open to due to the advantages, but we definitely need to look at the data. Thank you.
Ann Coker.
I too was bored exploring the year-round school possibility. I think it is important that we talk with the public and make sure that any concerns regarding year-round schools would be addressed, and make sure that we have all of the research and information in front of us before we make such a change. Also, I believe that rollout is key in how we roll out changing to a year-round school system. As a parent, I understand that would be a very critical change to our family life, so making sure that we have the best rollout procedure in place would be key. But there are many pros regarding year-round schools based on the research I've seen so far regarding summer slide, overcrowding, those items as well. But again, it's something that we would definitely need to take to the public and make sure that everyone understands.
Will Ares.
I think it's incredibly important to remember that we're representatives, and I think that it would really depend on what the Bermuda District voters wanted from us. There is a plethora of great data on it. We've seen test scores increase, reading levels were brought back up to standards, childcare for a lot of parents, free and reduced lunch for a lot of parents with socioeconomic downfalls. So there are many positives to it, but it needs to be something that the entire county or the entire district is in agreement on. It needs to be something that's going to benefit everyone. So I think that I agree with you. And communication is absolutely key, making sure that everyone knows well in advance and has ample time to talk about it. It's important. Thank you.
Justin Smith.
This is something where you absolutely have to have community buy-in, but that community also involves your administration and your teachers. We've implemented this in several schools here in Chesterfield, and in the ones we did, we've lost a couple digits of teachers. A lot of teachers are dependent on that summer vacation because they work second jobs because we don't pay our teachers enough to be able to work just a teacher job year-round. I do think it's something where there are a lot of pros. You know, you get rid of that summer slide, it is something where it can help with the foster child care for parents who have, you know, both of them are working. But it's something that we have to take by a school-by-school basis, and then there's some negative impacts there. Some parents are dependent on their older child to take care of their younger child when they're not home. And so now if you have different schools that are in different times, and one's year-round and the other one isn't, you may have taken away their, or sorry, their child care because the older student now is on a different schedule and they're not there to watch the younger symptoms. So it could increase costs. I think there's a lot of pronouns, but it's something we definitely have to have buy-in from the public, and I'd like to see about a 70% approval from the public in that area.
Erica Phillips.
I definitely believe that year-round schooling is beneficial. I believe that it can close the gap that we're seeing for our students of color and our students that are in a lower social, economic family. But I do think that the community does have to have a buy-in. And so as we've been doing it one school at a time, if we can continue on that path, I think that the community will support it if needed.
Don Heffron.
I support data-driven decision-making, and I think that we really need to look at the numbers that come back from the schools that we've already rolled out. This is not a cheap proposition. There's a definite expense to the schools and added expense to the schools for year-round schools, and we need to find where that money's going to come from before we continue to implement this on a wide scale for all of our Title I schools. And that being said, I'm going to echo some sentiments that have already been mentioned, that policy changes need to be made with the community, not for the community. And this discussion about year-round school has a very serious impact on our families and our teachers in the school system, and I don't think, as a school board representative, I would not be comfortable making that decision laterally.
Would anybody want to use their wild card for this question? Okay, we're going to go to question two now, and we're going to start with Dale and Debbie Graves, then we're going to go to Midlothian and Midlothian. The school system's recent struggles with transportation are well documented. Buses in some parts of the county are still arriving late to school, and there remains a significant bus driver shortage. How do you know about fixing the school system's transportation issues?
Nothing wrecks a teacher's morning more than late buses. When you hear on the morning announcement the string of bus numbers that are arriving late, and you're looking at a class that's half-full, and you spent the entire evening planning this great lesson, it's all of a sudden ruined. Not to mention the young elementary school children whose young mother is standing at a bus stop in the afternoon, and the bus isn't there when it's supposed to be. It's devastating to families that this transportation issue has become so significant. The solution is to find more bus drivers. If anybody out there wants to drive a bus, there are 53 drivers applications we need right now. We need more bus drivers. We have a bus driver shortage because we don't pay them enough. They get paid approximately $14 an hour. The national average is $17 an hour. I hate to say it, but it's a money issue. Pay them, they will pay.
Shepard McCall. Definitely, it's a big issue in Chesterfield County. I think that it's very specific with our kids getting picked up late, with our kids getting dropped off late. That's a real concern for our parents and constituents in the community, and it's definitely a safety issue. One of the things that I definitely would look at is that there need to be bus drivers standards so that we can get more people in and want to be bus drivers. We definitely need to increase bus drivers' pay. One of the things in Chesterfield County that has been discussed is that our bus drivers go through a large training, and that training costs a lot. But what happens at the end, once they complete the training, they're able to go to another school system and make more money. So we need to also look at giving our bus drivers maybe a year contract so that when we train them, then we can keep them at least for a year. I think this is a very critical issue that we need to get the families and the community involved in and talk about the transportation because it's definitely a safety issue for our children in the community. Thank you.
Catherine Haynes.
Midlothian folks, I'm pleased that we're not getting the mic. So I agree with my colleagues on belief in raising the salary for bus drivers. In 2017, I was at a start-time meeting, and Dr. Lane said that bus driver salaries needed to be raised for the start-time change plan to succeed. That didn't happen. I attend citizen budget advisory council meetings. I'm doing that for a year. The budget recommendations for 2019 were to raise bus driver salaries. It was one of four priorities that were put forth. That did not happen, so we need to do it. It's a market problem. We need a market solution. We also need to respect our bus drivers. We also need to respect our bus drivers, so not changing routes last minute without proper communication. And I'm hearing from our bus drivers that they need more metering support on the bus so that they can focus on driving, and so we need to solve that problem as well. Thank you.
Patrick Reagan.
Thank you. I believe our transportation problems will be solved by banging on the job marker alert goes up or down, we need multiple solutions that are not dependent on how our economy is based. I believe our bus drivers should be paid a fair salary, but if our economy gets better, we have triple hire in two more years, we can solve these problems. We need to develop solutions that are limiting routes since we're constantly asking for more bus drivers. I believe that we need to have practical solutions like working with our supervisors, have sidewalks put into those neighborhoods that are closest to the schools and develop walk zones that are acceptable for our parents and kids to walk to school without the need of hoping for a bus driver to be hired. We have kids that ride a bus 30 minutes around the whole neighborhood and then get dropped off of their farm they live in from the elementary school. That is not a responsible solution. We need to have practical solutions to this problem.
Demisha Potts.
The ongoing transportation issue has been going on far too long. Year after year, we have to deal with the same issue. We have to aggressively take action in ensuring that our students are being picked up and dropped off safely. According to our director of transportation, our current director of transportation, Carolyn Frye, he reported last year 21% of our students are still arriving late to less than 10% before the hour instructional bell or later in the morning. Bus drivers' shortage is 50% higher than last year, and an average of 14 drivers are absent every day. This is an issue. Folks, this is what I believe we need to do. We need to focus on recruitment and retention. We also need to, as I agree with the other board members or the candidates, we need to look at increasing bus salaries in addition to referral fees and bonuses. Thank you.
Ryan Harder.
So almost every day this year, my children are picked up late from school. Sometimes it's 10 minutes, sometimes it's up to 30 minutes, and then the same wake-up at home. This is a systemic issue. We need to find a way to increase the morale of bus drivers in the transportation department. We need to find a way to pay them a little bit more, and we need to find effective ways to retain bus drivers. And I think all three of those things are important to ensure that we can keep the bus drivers and that we can attract good talent from other places. I think Patrick had a very good point with walk zones. I see the same thing, too. I see bus stops directly across the street from the school. If there are safe places with sidewalks where this can be initiated, I think it's something to take a look at. If we can alleviate just a few routes, it's something worthwhile for us to take a look at. And of course, it would have to be something else we can get some community buy-in from because we do not want to act unless we have the support of people.
Does anyone want to use their wild card for this question? Will first, and Justin.
So I've been following this issue now for close to two years. I think a lot of the problem is teacher, or bus underpay, yes. But I think that we need to take a much bigger look into how the community deals with transportation. Currently, the Bermuda district does not have a single CBD center, and so Center Based Gift Program is not operated in this end of the county. And so when you send your child to a Center Based Gift Program, they're often sent to another part, to either the Dale district or Cloverhill district or whatever. So not only is that a mixture because it's, if you, if mom and dad both work jobs and can't pick their child up from school after school, it's a much farther travel time. So we're relying on buses to send our kids twice as far when we already have a bus shortage. So we need to start by looking at what programs we can offer within our home districts to mitigate some of the travel time between districts. We are currently out of bus lease. We are almost out of it. I think it's crucial that the county takes a serious look at the budget and figures out how we can purchase our own buses and so on and so forth. Thank you.
Justin.
Transportation is really one of the main issues that I'm running with. As a matter of fact, earlier this week, my wife called me in because we hadn't heard from the school, our children were not home, we hadn't heard from their bus. She called me immediately, I let the media work to give her a call. The bus showed up later, it was a different bus number, we had a substitute bus driver, but anyway, it wasn't communicated. It's not just the lack of bus drivers, it is the lack of communication. We have a software that we bought initially in Just Field County, covered with routing, ended up taking a $60,000 bath because it wasn't something that was big enough or important for accounting the stocks. I think we need to make smarter decisions when looking at what we're doing with the transportation, and it's not just the number of bus drivers, but it's also the types of contracts. We have contracts for bus drivers who work eight hours a day and we have six hours a day. So if we increase the number of hours that bus drivers can work, I think that would help reduce the number of bus drivers we need. We have kids who can't go on field trips because they don't have a bus driver to take them because they're the end-of-year contract drivers.
Anyone else want to use their wild card for that question? All right, next question will go first to Cloverhill and Erica Phillips, then to Bermuda and then Dale. After the school shooting two years ago that left 17 dead in Parkland, the school board convened the Safety Task Force Committee, which issued a list of recommendations for improving school safety last fall. Yet several of the recommendations, such as infrastructure improvements and adding mental health support staff, have not yet been implemented. What would you do to improve school safety?
I think the first thing that we need to look at is the support staff that we have in our schools. One of the things that has been a very hot topic is whether we should act on new schools. If we provide the right professionals, such as the right ratios for students to counselors, students to psychologists, students to social workers, that would really start us off to providing a safer environment for our students. So we need to look at how we're spending our money as far as staff versus adding in other things first. So I believe the staffing is the issue.
Dr. Effler.
I also agree that we need to increase our support staff to our schools. We need to, it's imperative that we implement the 1-250 counselor-to-student ratio for our school counselors. And we need to have more support for social, emotional learning programs. Because when we look at recause, we really need to build, look at the culture that we're building in our schools. Now, we have 25, that being said, we have $25 million of unfunded safety needs in our schools. So those safety needs, this list of safety needs that were mentioned earlier, that includes locks on doors, upgraded locks on doors, upgraded doorknobs, and a unified closed caption or closed-circuit television system. These are easily attainable, and they need to be made priorities.
Justin Smith.
So I think for school safety, really, we need to build a sense of community with our children. If everybody is talking to each other, they feel safe, they have that opportunity to talk to each other, and you build that sense of community, I think you're going to have less of those children who feel like they're left out and have something to prove as far as, you know, wanting to harm somebody. The mental health support staff is, I think, a big part of that, and we need to get to that 250 students to one ratio. And that's just a bit, I think that's what the state says recommends, but we could possibly do better than that. You know, it's a budget issue, we have to make sure that as a school board, we are judicious with our funds. SROs is something that has been recommended, and I think it's a good starting point, but we have to take a look at that return on investment. If a door lock or a different door barrier would give us a longer return on investment, key cards or double-door entry foyer, that might be something worth exploring first.
Will Ayers.
So I sat at many of those meetings. I think one important thing to note is that the chief of police for Just Field County specifically went on record and said that we are short police officers in Just Field County. Just Field County Public Schools needs to look into mental health support services before asking for armed mentors or armed officers in our schools. I think that being at the national recommended average of 251 is now crucial, but it is necessary to even be lower. There is no reason why we cannot overturn our children, that we cannot afford to give them more time with somebody who's going to help them in the long run, even if it's just college prep or career help. When I was at Conestell, my council, I had 450 students. I saw for one line in one year.
Anna Coker.
I agree, we need to look at increasing our mental health support in our school systems. I do know as a parent, my children come home and talk to me about their morning meetings, which I think is a really positive way for our students to start their morning. They have several times when they get to talk about things that are going on in their life and what kind of mood that they're in in particular, and so the teacher gets to engage with them and understand how they're feeling and know, okay, well Johnny had a rough night the night before. So that to me is also a part of mental health and a part of understanding how the student is feeling. I also agree that we need to look at, looking at ways to implement safety measures like double-locking doors like we have in many schools, as well as any other safety measures that we can implement. And that's what I would want to explore as a schoolwork representative.
I think this is an issue that we need to address. I am a counseling psychologist, and I deal with children with exhibit trauma on a daily basis, something that is disturbing and distressing to them. Some of the reasons that, when we look at school safety, you have bullying, you have gangs in school, you have kids that can't afford certain clothes and then people pick on them, and then what happened when these kids are picked on, they don't have the resources within themselves to make cognitive important decisions, and that's why we need more mental health individuals in the school system. As I said, I am a psychologist, and I've dealt with this. I had a young man not long ago, last Friday, matter of fact, dealing with being bullied in gangs and things like that in school, and unfortunately, he was shot seven times and killed. This is something that we definitely need to look at because school safety is definitely important because you send your kids to school for an education, you don't send them there to potentially get hurt or harmed. So this is something that I'm running on, and this is a part of our platform, and I think that mental health is critical, it proves true for our students in the school. If they're in there.
I remember vividly putting my little five-year-old girl in a wheelchair on a bus to go to school for the first time, and I was terrified. Not that she was going to come home not knowing her ABCs or her colors, that she wasn't going to come home safe. And that is before Sandy Hook. I can't imagine being a mother today, putting a young child on a bus to go to school in today's climate. We need to do everything possible to make sure our families feel confident that their children are going to come home to them safe. And that means that we have SROs in every building, and why not SROs in elementary? Are we saying that our elementary school children don't need to be as safe as our middle school and high school's children? I support every one of the school safety task force recommendations that they have proposed. They were actually adopted by the state. The county's task force was so good in their research that the state has adopted them, and we led the way in that. We need to put them all into play.
Does anyone want to use their wild card for this? I'll start with Catherine. Go down to the left. Catherine? Catherine Hayes.
I think we need to start by being honest and not giving false reassurances. I think we need to not give false reassurances. The FBI and the US Secret Service found that there were red flags in almost all the cases of active shooters after a combined. The shooters exhibited four to five concerning behaviors. So the key to preventing active shooters and keeping our kids safe is prevention. I went to a panel on safety that represented a diverse background of experts who were SROs, trained SROs, worked with mental health counseling, and each person when asked what the number one thing that they need or the most important practice for safety said relationships, which fits in with a big reason why I'm running and what fuels my campaign, and that is community building. We have a trauma-informed expert, Hasek, who is at, we need 64 counselors, 32 psychologists, 32 social workers, and four trauma-informed experts, and we'll start with that.
Demisha Potts.
Yes, I would like to begin by saying that on March 24, 2013, I participated in the march on Washington, the Parkland students up in Washington DC last year. That really was a powerful movement by a group of students, and I listened and I heard them. The other side of this is I do believe we need to secure our schools, but I think there's a better way. We need to address the bullying, which is a part of our platform. The other issue is there are other mechanisms that we can put in place, such as cameras, such as undercover, not really undercover in schools, but I work with state government and our state police walking around, some in civilian clothes. I do not think, I think it can look, it's rather threatening when we have school resource officers in tactical gear approaching children with special needs and interrogating them. So we need to look at it from both angles and approach it with the most comprehensive way of addressing the issue to ensure that our schools are safe, but that also our children are not being threatened and targeted. Thank you.
Ryan Harder.
School safety is probably one of the things that's nearest to my heart, and I'm very grateful a lot of things that everyone has said in here. Definitely, we do need more counselors at school. Some of the things that I've seen at the school that I taught at, trauma and form care, teachers were able to get training on how to deal with students who already had particular issues, and I think that's important, that from the inside, we're able to see signs of when students are disturbed about something, or they're just no little more background and build those relationships. Secondly, making sure we have double locks on the doors, making sure that we do have cameras covering every entrance in and out of the school, making sure that there is more communication within the school for teachers to be able to communicate, besides there are phones in your room. Finally, the school resource officers, I see that as a mentorship role. Besides from that being there for safety, I have seen resource officers make relationships with students that teachers weren't even able to make. And by the end of the year, they would rather go to the SRO than they would rather come to a teacher. So I think we really need to rethink the SRO situation.
Anyone else want to use their wild card? Erica.
I think the question becomes, who are we protecting? I believe that we're supposed to be educating and protecting all students, and this becomes an ethnic issue. This becomes, you know, when you're looking at children, minority children, children of color, they are disciplined at a disproportionate rate in Chesterfield County. The statistics show that. And we have children who have experienced trauma and adverse situations, and to see it in the office every day, how are we affecting those students? Are we protecting the kids from people coming in, or are we protecting the kids from kids? And if we have that as an issue, we have a bigger problem. So we need to look at who we're protecting.
Does anyone else want to use their wild card? This next question starts off with Milothean, Patrick Reagan, goes to Matowaka, and then Cloverhill. The public school system in our community colleges have partnered with businesses on workforce development. If the county still struggles to keep high school graduates in the local workforce, how can we improve the workforce development pipeline?
At its core, the education system is designed to make sure people have a future in their career field so they can provide for their family, their society. We have to make sure that kids are leaving with relevant skills, whether it be to go to college or to actually enter a trade. I believe that we need to allow students to have dual enrollment as soon as possible as they identify that they want to participate in dual enrollment. But that also means exposing them to those experiences like we just had with the current affairs, they can see what's out there. But what I don't support is pushing all kids to the workforce if that's not what they want to do. We need to give kids the option, let them see all the options, so they can
We need to give kids the option, let them see all the options so they can make sure they have the opportunity to succeed in whatever field they want to have.
Catherine Haynes.
I think that we need to give our kids options. Uh, I first learned about this problem when my daughter came home as a sophomore and she was hoping to do the culinary program at, uh, CTC Hall and realized that she did not have space in her, in her, uh, course schedule. So she was not able to do that. So with good counseling, um, students can sit down and find out what the students' passions are and do this ahead of time. So it's not when they're sophomore and it's too late, um, but do it early and just like when we're happening with the specialty centers, uh, and making sure that all students are learning about our specialty centers, uh, and what changes they might need in order to fit those into their schedule. We also, uh, need to make sure, um, that we provide, um, that we have people, uh, in schools that are telling stories about different options. It was interesting when my sixteen-year-old.
Ryan Harder.
Um, so, uh, Patrick pointed out, the mission to tomorrow. So mission to tomorrow is future. My kids just went on it yesterday. Um, and I'm taking classes there. Oh, no, without, so I've taken, I've taken classes there before in the past. And I think it's great because they're able to see, um, different options that are out there besides for just college. All right. More monotony in charge. However, I don't need to be really push our technical centers and our technical training as much. There should be as many barriers to get into our tech centers. Um, I had a lot of students who were looking to, they came asking for recommendations when they were looking to get into tech centers and they had to have a pretty high GPA to get in there. Well, the students that were probably benefited the most and thrive in those situations are not necessarily gonna have the best GPA. I think that we need to do a better job with the county of supporting that. Um, the thing, when we have people come in for career days, just exposing young people to the different options that are out there and let them know that college is great and college could be an option, but it's not the only option.
Visha Pah.
Yes, I think, uh, we, for beginners, I know when I was in school, in high school in the nineties, our school counselors were used as a resource to help us in this area as far as identifying careers that was suited for where we were academically. Uh, but we're, what our counselors are based with today, they are being delegated other non-essential tasks that are related to their, um, to their employee work profile. So they may have a scheduled lunchroom duty. If we are able to eliminate a lot of those non-counselor responsibilities, then they can assist these students in formulating a career plan. I will end in support of our continued specialty centers as well as our, uh, we also have the Code RBA. I am in support of that as well as our specialty centers. Um, I think we also need to make sure that we are incorporating military. Um, we, we still, uh, our students.
Have they asked you to read off?
Thank you.
Donna Heffra.
So I'm gonna start by saying that I recognize the interdependent relationship between schools and economic development. Um, however, I don't think this is a situation where we could have the tail wagging the dog. Uh, school, students should be choosing their career paths based on capabilities and interests, not on what, uh, they're not employed, employment factories. Um, students should be pursuing their interests in schools. And I, we went on board, I want to fully, I plan to fully support, um, the Virginia Department of Education to profile graduate five Cs that will create students who will be good citizens, who will be good collaborators and creative problem solvers. Because when we focus on these larger thought skills, then we're gonna have a workforce that is going to be able to, um, to pursue their own passions and, um, be an asset to, um, the economic community.
Justin Smith.
So working with the local community is very important here. Um, the CTC is in the Cloverhill district, so we have, uh, a lot of different opportunities, um, in just for people, for kids to learn, not just, uh, what they need to do to succeed in college, a path that they choose, building a new workforce if they decide maybe they wanna be an electrician, uh, or a brick mason. We've actually had, uh, the brick masons have come in, just given, asked to partner with us, and we've done nothing with that. Um, we need to give students every opportunity to explore what possible careers they could have. Um, not everybody is going to go to college. And I think, you know, my generation, our parents pushed us to college, it was something that was expected, you finish high school, the college you're going to. Uh, I have a, a relative who got his degree in business management and now he is an electrician and he's carrying the forty to fifty thousand dollars in debt that he's not gonna use. Uh, so we need to make sure that we're working with our kids, help them explore the educational opportunities that excite them and get them involved there. So if they decide in their freshman year, no, I thought that's what I wanted to do, it's not, it's not too late for them to change their actions.
Erica Good.
I think that all of the children should be exposed to every option, but I would like to feedback on what Ryan said. You know, the children who really need the tech, the technical center or, or would be most at risk of not going to college, aren't able to get into the technical center. And then if they are accepted into the technical center, if their parents can't afford the fees for the uniforms and the kids, which can go upward of seven hundred dollars, the kids can't participate. So we need to look at the equity there and figure out how we can support families. We need to involve the community and bring in some resources for families if we can provide finances, new grants for fam, for children to participate.
Thanks very much. Does anyone want to use their wild part on this question? Anne.
So the company that I work for, ITAV, um, it has both professional career paths as well as, um, trade career paths. And so I see on a daily basis how important it is, um, that we foster and we, um, show our children the options that are out there, available to them. Um, the company, ITAV, that I work for offers a summer program for high school students, um, to come and explore the idea of engineering. Um, so I work, you know, very closely with, um, both sides of, um, the different career paths that are available. So it's very important that we educate our students as well as our parents, all the options that are out there, again, some company involvement as well to help, um, show what is available out there to our students.
Anyone else want to hear? Sugar.
Uh, being an educator, especially at the higher education level, I think it's important that we allow students, uh, to choose which path they decide to go, whether they wanna go to college or whether they wanna get a, um, a vocational trade. But some of the things that occurred when I was growing up that I think we need to implement back into schools is the college tours. We need to do a career assessment inventory as early as the eighth grade, because that's where kids begin to develop their interest in their cognitive ability. We need to do more career days so that they can understand the different careers that's available. We need to do workplace tours. We need to have companies come in and we need to have our kids go to places. Also, and one of the things that's very important significantly with me is when we take a kid to our job day, so that our kids can be exposed to what we do. And I think those things will allow us opportunities to help our children make better decisions in their career choices.
Anyone else have a wild?
Um, my husband's in the trades and I hear constantly how they have a difficult time trying to find electricians and tradesmen who make a lot of money. And we need to change the stigma that's attached to today's educational world that if you don't go to college, you're viewed as a failure. And that actually begins in elementary school. And when Dr. McCall talked about career days, we have career days in, in middle school. We have huge career fairs in middle school and they're exposed to lots of careers. But I can remember very few tradesmen that can come in on career day. Career day is full of the doctors and lawyers and dentists and professional careers. We don't expose our children to all of the trades that are available. And I can tell you, they can make some money without the college debt. So we need to work on changing that stigma of not going to college. And that will give our children a lot more opportunity.
Our next question will begin with Bermuda and Anne Coker, and then go to Dale and Milowkin. Equity is a stated goal of CCPS, whereas equality means treating everyone equally. Equity refers to giving every student what he or she needs to succeed by allocating additional resources to students facing disadvantages due to factors like race, language barrier, gender, disability, or socioeconomic status. As a school board member, what changes would you make to improve equity in our school system?
Equity is a very important, um, issue that we need to make sure that all of our children, again, no matter race, religion, sex, so forth, um, that they are getting the exact same quality education, um, across the board. Um, it is important that we are, um, aware of, uh, what our students' needs are. Um, our kids learn at different levels. Um, it's not based on any physical attribute, it's typically based on, um, a learning attribute. And so we need to make sure that we are understanding how our children learn. Um, being a mom for children, uh, four of mine learn very differently. Um, so I have some that excel and don't need mom's help and I have others that, that definitely do. Um, so again, it's about making sure that we are, um, teaching to our students and teaching, um, across the board equally.
Will Mary.
Simply, I think that the first step we need to take is doing a personal inventory of our schools and making sure that we are providing as many programs as possible throughout the county to each and every school. I think, um, we do a great disservice for ourselves when we do things, um, like I mentioned earlier, there's, there's no CBG program in the Irvinge district. And that is inequitable because if, you know, it's a single-parent household and mom has three kids and cannot afford to pick up their child after, um, after school activities and there's a bus that runs after school activities three hours late, um, mom will ultimately say, you know, I can't send you to this, this program that will ultimately help you in the long run, but because I can't afford or have the time to get you back and forth. If we're taking an inventory of our schools and seeing what we can do to offer as much as possible for every student, we will help close that gap when it comes to, uh, education in Chatham County. Thank you.
Debbie Bailey.
Equity encompasses so many different levels of conversation. Everything from the child in a wheelchair that can't play on a playground because it's not an accessible playground, to the child who can't pay for the SAT because it costs sixty dollars and their family does not have those funds. One of the things Dr. Dorr just instituted was paying for the PSAT and SAT, which was to a tune of about a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars out of the budget, which was unfunded. They didn't fund it. And that would have been a game changer, um, for a lot of students who don't take the SAT because they don't have the money. He went out and actually had in hand and begged for money through, from Chesterfield Education Foundation and got it funded for this year, but that's it. It's not in the budget for the next year after. We have so many different areas that we can address equity and one of them is just intra-district funding. We have a school in Chesterfield County whose school fundraiser raised four hundred thousand dollars and another school that raised four hundred dollars. So there's a lot of inequity in the district.
Sugar.
Just looking at educational equity, um, looking at a measurement of achievement, treating people fair, um, just giving everybody fair opportunities across the board, that's definitely some of the things that we need to look at. We need to have more minorities and women and administrative positions. We need to do culturally sensitivity training so that people can understand the cultures of different people and I think that would help them as far as equity and diversity. And I think that we need to look at our school systems, how they make up and make sure that our administration and teachers are made up of that population also, so that people can be able to effectively communicate with each other. And I think that once you build that relationship and people are effectively able to communicate with people, then you develop equity. But equity is definitely a big thing and diversity is definitely a big thing and we definitely need that in Chesterfield County.
Catherine Haynes.
First of all, your.
Your zip code in Lillebein should not determine the resources that your school has. I think we should start by sharing the data because I think most constituents are not aware of the discrepancy between schools. Second, we need to send them the message that we all truly benefit when everybody has greater access. I heard, uh, the word disadvantaged kids in the question, um, and this sets the message that only a certain, uh, group of people benefit, but when everybody has access, we all benefit. Uh, a quick example, um, I went to Metropolitan Educational Research Consortium, uh, uh, conference at VCU, uh, this past week, and, uh, I happened to sit in, it was not planned on a presentation, uh, that was led by Sean Abel, who's the principal of the Irvinge High School. And he changed, when there was no racial or economic diversity related to the being, he put in more access because only half the population, uh, were taking AP, uh, high-level classes. Uh, now, when listening, the population is more diverse and everybody has access to these classes.
Patrick Regan.
Thank you. Uh, this is an issue that I frequently talk about in my household because my wife is a fifth-grade teacher, one of the highest percentage free-renewed sludge schools in the county, and it's in the Lillebein, it's chocolate elementary. And for me, this isn't an issue about, about budget or doing something better than the top. It's about, it's in terms of our teachers. Our teachers have the best ideas about how to handle equity in the classroom. Maybe they want a new cell teacher, not a homework or a third grader. Maybe they want to do our teachers on the weekends or at nighttime. Sometime the working parents can make it, not on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. We need real solutions like home business and things that our teachers can help with. These are things that actually handle equity issues and it's not driven by the board, it's driven by our teachers.
Does anyone want to use their wild part?
So when we look at equity, we can look at it from a macro view and a micro view. So when we look at it from a, a bird's eye view, just last week, I applaud the, um, Virginia Board of Education for passing the equity add-on. That's going to supplement the state funding, uh, for our county, um, for students who are receiving, um, special education services and English language learners. It will also account for, um, economic hardships that our students are facing. Um, but then when we go down to a micro level, we're talking at the school level, we're talking about the classroom, we're talking about the teachers, um, we, I'd like to talk about the district, the distribution and the number of SROs that are put into our schools and where those schools have higher concentrations, have higher numbers of SROs, um, and what those, what those students look like. Um, and then we can talk about things like playgrounds where, uh, we can talk about playgrounds. Something as easy as that, where our county now, what we do is we drop a playground into a building. Okay, and then we need to get playgrounds for everybody, not just.
Okay, we now go to the three questions at the lightning round. And I'm gonna start with Justin Smith and go around this way, go to Justin, Erica, and then we're gonna, gonna come around this way. Uh, fifteen seconds or less. Despite research that shows that teenagers fare better academically to later school start times, there are many parents who didn't support and still don't support the change implemented a year ago. Would you support altering or rolling back the school's start time changes?
If rolling it back, then we can get our kids to school on time, at home on time for solving transportation issues? Yes.
Erica.
Yes. As I said before, um, I support policies that are made with the community, not at the community, so this would be another discussion that we would open up.
Anne.
Um, I agree that we need to open this up to the community and actually let's take a, a look into a checkup of what this, uh, changes, uh, it's to do.
I think we need more information and more data, sort of, knowledge, that's what we've done, uh, and go from there.
We need school start times based on getting our kids to school. I don't believe in ninth graders sleeping in his education, that he more important than my eighth grader's education. We need real solutions.
Data driven would be to include, uh, middle school, uh, also adolescents as well as high school. So we need to look at that as a former practicing midwife, uh, sleep is critical to mental health.
Good answer.
Yes, I would support going back to the original school start time. That's what got us into predicament or part of the problem. I think the parents have spoken and, um, I think when we changed the, to add to the transportation issues, that was not the right decision to change, uh, the school's start time to where we are now and that's been a part of the problem.
Um, parents and teachers were not necessarily happy with changing the school start times. I would say the majority of people were against it. Um, and as a parent, someone that sees. And as a parent, someone that sees their children going to the door at 6:35 in the morning, if the community overwhelmingly wanted to change those start times, I would support it.
Shadr.
I like evidence-based research and definitely bring the community in and see what they think and put it all together and then really make a decision based on it.
Debbie.
I think they changed the school's start times and did not have the funds to support it, and that's why we're in the bus situation that we are and added additional routes. I would support going back to the original start times.
Thank you. Okay, the next, next question, I'm going to start with Catherine. We're going to go around this way. Legionella scare earlier this summer had led to a conversation about who should manage facility maintenance, the county or the school system? Is it time for the school system to see facility maintenance to the county government?
So the school system is large, 8,000 employees, about 70 buildings, and county is a lot smaller. So it's a little bit like Walmart going to CVS and saying, can we help you with your problems? So I think we need to be careful. This conversation needs to be between the new school board and the new board supervisors, and together we will work out a plan that serves everyone.
Patrick.
I don't see it as an issue of who's better, also that it's a matter of contract management. We need to know who's going to be able to manage the actual contractor, do the job, hold them accountable, and make sure it's the right. Will.
I think the county should be managing, and I think that we will be able to hold them accountable a lot better when our names are on it, and I would be willing to, to be like that.
Anne.
I think the new school board and the board supervisors should work together to come up with a plan to make sure that this issue, situation does not happen again, and that whoever is in charge of this is held accountable for those maintenance needs.
Got it.
I think that the schools should handle the maintenance of our buildings, and I think that it's time for the county to fund our maintenance needs properly at 2.5 of the assessed value of the buildings.
Erica.
I think it comes down to accountability and competence and where between the school, school board and the board supervisors, I think we don't.
Justin, I would not be inclined to hand it over here, asking the school board, who has one priority, and that is our school facilities, to hand it over to someone who now has competing priorities. And if the school maintenance is not the number one priority, I would be remiss to hand it over to them.
Debbie.
If the way we turn over our grounds and our custodial service, which have both been outsourced, is any indication, I do not believe we should turn it over. We should take care of our own homes.
Shadr.
I think that the new school board and the board supervisors should work together and make sure that we hold people accountable and make sure that they do the things that they're responsible to do.
I think that it's important that we take a look at the contract, and if the county were to take it over, we really need to see how that would actually play out, if it's even viable. If we just rush to judgment and we make a hasty decision, we end up taking ourselves in trouble, which is like we have transportation issues. So how would we want to work that on?
Shadr.
I strongly feel as though that the new school board and board supervisors need to work collaboratively together to make the best decisions that are in the best interest of our students and our families and our community. I think we, well, I know there should be competent people who are making also those decisions on a administrative level and...
Hold on to the mic. We're going to start with you on the third question, and we're going to go this way. The current school board decided to withdraw from participation alongside the board of supervisors in the joint audit and finance committee. Do you think the school system should maintain its own audit committee or return to the joint committee?
Can you repeat your question?
Sure. The current school board decided to withdraw from participation alongside the board of supervisors in the joint audit and finance committee. Do you think the school system should return to the joint committee or simply retain its own audit committee?
I feel as though that the community should be able to work collaboratively. We should be a group of experienced, knowledgeable professionals or individuals who should be, who would make the best decisions. However, if that cannot be done, then it should be taken care of or rendered as an outside party.
Shadr.
I have a certificate in conflict resolution and...
I always will be encouraging this from resolving conflict. We should return, and we should address the reasons that the boards, the school board felt the need to leave, so that we can move forward together.
Patrick.
Yes, we absolutely need, as a travel attorney who advocates for my clients, I believe we need to advocate with those board supervisors for our needs. We're not going to lump the ball, or it's very hard to make our points.
Will.
A big part of my platform is having open dialogue with the board supervisors. We're not beginning to do that collaboratively if we are not working together. I think it is super important that we do rejoin and work together.
Anne.
I think I mentioned before that it's very important that the board supervisors and the school board work together as far as making the decision whether to return or keep the audits separate. I would like to know more information as to why it was separated, to begin with, by our...
Got it.
A large part of my platform is to bring more transparency to our school board process. So I would absolutely support having a dialogue about having, bringing that committee back together.
Erica.
I would definitely support working together with the board of supervisors so that we have more oversight and more training there.
Justin, I'm in favor of anything that brings more transparency to government at all of us.
Debbie.
I would echo that, and I think that it's imperative that the board of supervisors and the school board work together. This is all county dollars. It's not the board supervisors' dollars. It's Chesterfield citizens' dollars. And we need to work together in an audit and with everybody.
Shadr, I definitely agree and concur with everybody that we definitely need to work together and come up with solutions together so that we can have transparency. So I'm for rejoining and working together. Right?
And I also agree with everyone. We need to rejoin that audit process together. It is important for the board supervisors and the school board to work together to make sure we're all moving forward at the same time and at the same pace.
Okay, great. Ryan, hold on to the, to the mic. We're going to go this way, Erica, now, and this is a question for 30 seconds. Everybody gets 30 seconds for this question. Redistricting. In 2015, the school board commissioned a consultant studying recommended a plan for county-wide redistricting to address overcrowding in schools and excess capacity at others. In 2016, however, the broader redistricting plan was abandoned. It was deemed too disruptive to families. Would you support comprehensive county-wide redistricting?
Well, in my district, Cosby High School is at 120%. We also have Tomahawk Creek is at 120%. Little Pop Elementary School is at over 120%. So something has to be done, and we have to revisit the idea to redistrict. And it doesn't necessarily need to be a large scale thing, but we need to see how we're able to adjust these districts so that we're able to take the overcrowding in some of these classrooms and to bring down the student-to-teacher ratios.
Shadr.
There definitely, there definitely is some issues with schools being overcrowded. We know that. I'm not one of those individuals that jumped to big changes, so I would have to look at the evidence-based literature and see what's going on, and we'll work together, and if collectively there's a void, we come up with that, that need to be redistricted, then we would look at that at that time and make a decision.
Debbie.
In my district, five middle schools, 123% over capacity, has 22 trailers. Metro Brook High School is over capacity, but there's 500 empty seats at LC Burke. There are empty seats in other schools around the county. We need to be good stewards of our resources, and that includes our buildings. And it's kind of unconscionable to ask the taxpayers to pay for more schools when we have empty seats because we're too afraid to redistrict. We need to redistrict.
Justin.
Redistricting is something that should be done sparingly, but I think to do that at least once during our tenure would be a good idea for several reasons. One is going to help with overcrowding. The other one is you have type of one funds that are being spread out among several different schools if I redistricting, including those number of students that would fall into that poverty level, and then reduce the number of type of one schools that we have. That money then goes to the schools that need it versus having it been spread out because those funds don't expand based on more schools, it's a finite amount.
Erica.
I believe that we definitely need to redistrict, as we know that most of our schools are overcrowded, but I do think we have to consider how it affects the children, families, yes, with the children, because our schools need child center. And so we need to look at, really look at that and see how, how it's worked and what we need to change.
Got it.
I think that redistricting is a conversation that we can have if it's done carefully, thoughtfully, and equitably. I think that we need to be mindful that we are not segregating our schools based on low-income students. And I'd also think that we can't continue to push the peas around our plate and pretend we ate the vegetables. Eventually, we're going to have to build the schools we need. We need two middle schools at least, and we need one high school built.
Anne.
Redistricting is a hard topic. Being in the reputed district, we just went through this with the elementary school, we can go in an elementary. So I know as a parent how hard it is to hear that word, redistricting, but we need to be mindful of the overcrowding and the population within our schools. We also need to keep in mind the neighborhoods as far as where our kids, who they play with, they may do this, to make sure that we're keeping the neighborhood, we're just keeping it.
Will.
Sorry. I think the board has been incredibly reactionary as opposed to being proactive. I think having a very, having a hard conversation with them about where developments are going in our, in our county is, is tripping. We're, if we're not finding out about developments until after the fact, and we're not accounting for that when it comes to us building schools, we're doing a great disservice to the people who live here. I think it's important that we make sure that redistricting is the last possible thing that we do before, you know.
Patrick.
People buy homes because of the school district they're in. There's no secret about that. We need to make sure that we have long-term plans in place so people aren't surprised by a school being redistricted the next year. That's not fair to them, that's not fair to the students. I want to look at other options so we don't have to redistrict because I don't believe it's fair for people to buy that, buy those homes. That means we need to look at ways of moving specialty centers, CPG programs, our kids are already choosing to go to another school for a specific program, move the program to schools that have room. That's the first step, and then we need to look at a long-term plan. We are way too reactionary, to be honest with you. We need a five, 10-year plan.
Patrick.
The redistricting study that you mentioned, actually mentioned that we should look at kids that are being out of, bussed out of the district, and so that is something I'd absolutely like to do as well, and be better at long-term planning and use GIS, evidence-based, non-political strategies. I have said that I will not take redistricting off the table for political reasons, will not shy away from that conversation. That said, I think the idea that redistricting is going to solve our, our elementary school crowding problems, after having looked at enrollment, I don't think that's the case.
Good answer.
Yes, prior to CCPS, considering we just, and we need to first carefully access, access community demographics. We also need to research into the types of programs that would appeal to diverse families and give attention to the roles of transportation and the change in residential patterns in the area. These mentions require discussion and planning prior to the development of a comprehensive county-wide redistricting plan, and with the desire to improve educational equity and achievement through sub-economic integration.
Thank you. So we're going to start now with Dot, and we're going to go down your way, come around here. And here's the question, another 30-second question. While local teachers have received relatively small pay increases over the past few years, these pay increases tend to benefit recently hired teachers. Meanwhile, salaries of veteran teachers do not increase at the same rate. How would you provide incentives to keep our veteran teachers from seeking employment elsewhere?
Well, we need to reevaluate that salary scale in that we're losing veteran teachers, qualified teachers, and experienced teachers to other divisions because a lateral move to where I go is more beneficial than staying where you are is, that is detrimental to our whole community. And as far as, as, you have pay increases, absolutely, I would support the proposed 5%, the additional 5% pay increase for our teachers. Teachers, please.
Anne.
I do support increasing teachers' pay. I think it's important for us to keep our qualified teachers here in Chesterfield County, and our veteran teachers are, are most, not most important, but they're, they're seasoned. They know, they've worked with all the students and working years. So it's important that we make sure that their salary increases are keeping them here and we keep the quality and maintain our, our teacher staff here in Chesterfield County.
Will.
I have 30 seconds. Ooh. The, we talk about teacher pay increases and 5% is great, but we need to make sure we're doing everything in our power to make sure that those 5% increases are not mitigated by healthcare increases and other things that take a teacher's salary back from them. Providing more resources in the classroom is crucial because you can't give a 5% raise and then also tell them they need to provide all the pay for any for the entire year.
Patrick.
Every two weeks, my wife gets her paycheck, nor will she will will her because it feels like it's been the same for the past five years she's been in this county. And lo and behold, it has been because they change the scale every year. That's unconscionable. You should not have a sliding pace down. You got hired at a corporate role and they told you that you weren't a teacher, decide like how hard your is, you leave. That's what's happening to teachers, leaving. We need to have a set pace down, so when you step in day one, you know your pay is in year 21, including any future raises that were given.
Patrick.
Our veteran teachers, our mentors, we don't have a teacher shortage problem in Chesterfield. We have a teacher retention problem, and we can help fix our teacher retention problem by keeping our veteran teachers and doing collaborative undercover planning where our veteran teachers can help our newer teachers so that they stay. And absolutely, we have to raise the salary of all teachers, including veteran teachers of surrounding counties. Veteran teachers have higher pay.
Good answer.
Yes, I value all of our teachers, and I value our veteran teachers. According to the National Education Association, Virginia's average teacher salary in 2017 to '18 was more than $9,000 below the national average. I am going to continue to advocate and fight for all of our teachers every year until we are bringing our teachers up to the national average. They play a very vital and intricate role in educating our children, and we need to make sure that we are doing our best, that we are, that they are being brought up and paid for what they are given in all-time on students on database.
Right. So as a teacher, I do know that the first couple of years, teaching is kind of the honeymoon phase, and then it kind of wears off. And the one thing that will probably keep a lot of teachers there is if there was a steady step in your pay, and then there's not. We have, we have nice sums of money beginning to attract young teachers, but you're right, the seasoned teachers, up to about 20 years, you're not receiving much more than $100 to $200 more per year a step. We need to make sure that we're paying our teachers more, advocating for more money, and make sure that we go ahead and restructure those pay steps.
Shadr.
I definitely, I definitely think that we need to increase teachers' pay. We deal with this also at the college level, that some of the newer teachers coming in, professors, and they make more than, some of the more seasoned professors. So I definitely think that we need some kind of step or some kind of evaluation process for their pay so that the seasoned teachers can, can continue to make money and do a better job and definitely be up to the national average.
Debbie.
A brand-new teacher in Chesterfield County earns $45,812. Fifteen years later, she earns $49,000. I would definitely support a stepped salary index scale that rewards longevity, that gets the teacher to the higher end of the scale quicker. We need to decrease the steps. We need to actually have a step scale. We don't even have that. When I first started teaching 34 years ago, we had a step scale, but then recession comes, they get away with it.
Justin.
Here we have a two...
Here we have a teacher shortage. I think that can be boiled down even more to we have a shortage of professional-level master's degree employees who are willing to work between $40,000 and $50,000 a year. That's unconscionable. You're not going to find that in almost anywhere else in the workforce. We need to make sure that that compression that exists now with teacher salaries isn't something that causes them to leave. We need to make sure that we're at least keeping up with the cost of living. When you're making less real money after being in the school system for 15 years, there's no reason, no wonder why teachers are leaving.
Erica.
I agree with everyone on the panel. You definitely need to pay our teachers more. 5% is not enough, 10% really would be enough. But I do think we need to have performance incentives. Our veteran teachers are important, but we need to be sure that they are being able to keep up with the change in our community because our community has changed, the diversity has changed. And so we need teachers who are competent and are capable of working with the students in the way they are now.
Thank you. I'm going to start with the 32nd question now with Shadrick, and go around this way. Question that deals with the implications of some change, one change in demographic in Chesterfield. As recently as 2000, 2/3 of Chesterfield households have school-aged children. That number is about 1/3, which means there are more households in the county that aren't directly invested in our schools. Does the school system need to do more to connect with the broader community, including those families without school-aged children?
Yeah, most definitely. I think that there needs to be some communication, some forums, some panels, so that we can get the community and the school connected. So I think that's definitely something that we need to do. And I think that we need to keep, we need to make sure that our community are definitely involved in the school systems and know what's going on because that definitely affects them and how their property value, different things like that. So we definitely need that communication. I'm definitely for that, and I believe in relationships and transparency, and those things will help us do better.
Thank you. Ryan. It is very important that everybody still stays engaged, and I believe that it's right around 33.7% or something to that nature, the number of households that have school-aged children. But some of those homes have four or five children. So it is important to kind of take a look at that and see that it really could be a little bit more than just the 33%. However, for the taxpayers, it is important for them to see that we are being good stewards of their money. And then being good stewards of the money, having a good school system, does protect property values. Division.
I think it is important that we, as a board, as a board member, that we continuously connect with the community, that we are engaging them, and that we are also asking for their input and decisions. We are, is only as good as our community's input and thereby in on a lot of decisions that are made with their tax office.
Erica.
I think we need to change, we talk about the problem. Instead of saying that only 1/3 of our taxpayers have kids and help with schools, we need to talk about how we have a stronger democracy when everyone gets a great first-class education. At the Metropolitan Education Resource Consortium Conference, they talked about the education model as a national security issue. We need to talk about when we go into the emergency room in hospital, do we want a staff of well-trained doctors? Do we want electricians? That's a conversation.
Patrick.
We have a crisis of confidence issue with our school system right now. That's the biggest issue here when I talk to people in the community with their kids in the schools. They hear about aging, they hear about bus issues, they hear about maintenance issues. They need to know that they can trust us with the funds they give us as taxpayers. And as a trial lawyer who advocates on a daily basis, I'm going to advocate based on the actual needs of our schools, advocate with those people in the community. And that's why I'm proud that I was the board supervisor for the Realtors Association because I understand the issues, not just the schools, but the community that's funding our schools.
Will.
Education, specifically just for the county, but across the nation, directly affects the community that is involved. When our schools do well, our property values are high, et cetera, et cetera. But we, when we look at the tax dollars, we spend just barely over $33,000 a year per incarcerated individual in Virginia. We spend less than $11,000 per student in public schools in Virginia. We are not showing the taxpayers currently that we are willing to spend their money responsibly by not investing in our inner consumers.
Anne.
I concur with the panel here that we need to engage our community, we need to engage our taxpayers so that they understand how the school board is spending their money, and that we're spending, we'll be spending it wisely. All taxpayers, regardless if you have students, kids in the school system or not, are vested interests in the community. And it's important that we make sure that everyone is informed and that we can do that through engaging the workforce as another option to engage in the community.
Dawn.
I agree. We need to inform and educate all of our community about the value of our public schools. And I agree with Catherine, an educated community benefits everyone in our community. A well-educated community is what we want. We want teachers who can, who know how to teach. We want doctors who know how to heal. And I also was endorsed by the Realtors Association of Realtors because I understand that home values are tied to school quality. And the more quality schools that we have, better, the better off we'll be.
I believe that community engagement is paramount. When we look at the resources or the lack there of resources, we have a plus community. We need to bring the community into our schools more. It would definitely close the gap and it may even help with our achievement gap.
Justin.
Having great schools in Chesterfield is something that increases everyone's property value. It's the reason people move to Chesterfield and specific districts. When my wife and I bought our first house, we moved into, the first thing we looked at were schools. So for every five points escorts go up, property values increase 2.5%. There is a value there for everybody, and when our children are well-educated, the community does better as a result.
Erica.
So not just to parrot everyone else, I'll tell you a story. I've knocked over 4,000 doors, and I can tell you I know there are 65% of the people in Chesterfield County that don't have children in school because I've heard that a lot at the doors. But I've run into a lot of elderly people who we need to get creative and involved in our school system. Because when we connect with them and bring them into our schools to work with our students, they're going to be more supportive in the long run. I have some really good ideas.
Thank you. We have a question from the audience that we want to put forward before we get to your final statements, and that is, "How should Chesterfield County start with taxes?" And go around to Will Beck. "How should Chesterfield County invest in early childhood education for all children to prepare them for school, the workforce, and to be productive members of this community?"
This is something that I think will have the biggest impact on our education system. If you've heard about the 4 million word product, the idea is that a child who's in poverty is that you're 4 million plus worse than a kid that's not in poverty. That means they're already in need of school, hearing less words, not being able to articulate themselves. We need early childhood education to get those kids into the school system so they can be a part of our school system. It's about priorities like everything else. I think that is something that could be prioritized and have a real difference long-term, not just in that year for that kid, early childhood education.
Will.
We know for a fact that early childhood education helps identify barriers that may inhibit them from learning productively. I did not realize I had a learning disability until I was a senior in high school. And at that point, I was going, "I'm so sorry, there's nothing more we can do than graduate in two months." Had there been an opportunity for me to be educated earlier, there's more of a chance that that disability would have been caught. And I think that access is something that should be structured across the entire county.
Anne.
Yeah, I agree as well that early education, the sooner we can get education in front of our young, our youth, the better off our students will be, the more confident they will be going into school, and the better that they will succeed in their education career. So I would love to see what programs we can implement to increase early childhood education.
Dawn.
And I support our early childhood education program and expanding that, maybe getting more students. I think we also need to look at our communication with families and educated families to know that these programs are available. Chesterfield County had open seats in our Head Start program this year, and that was money that was just federal funds that weren't used, and we gave money on the table and needed children behind.
Erica.
I would leave my early childhood education certificate from this campus, this school, John Tyler. Early education, the expansion of it is a part of my platform. I believe that early education is paramount to breaking down that school-prison pipeline. It cuts out some of the discipline issues because children have adjusted to the school sooner. Parents have adjusted to getting their children ready for school and participating a little sooner, and it helps.
Okay, Justin.
Early childhood education, I mean, there's no screaming up here. Studies show that your child does better the earlier that they are in school. So if we can get the kids in there pre-K, you're there, you've got extra gear before you're getting into the tough curriculum, and you're just going to do better overall. And our job as a school board is to make sure our kids are getting the best education possible.
Anne.
I have a girlfriend that works at Head Start for Chesterfield County, and I can tell you it's an amazing program. And the most bang for your buck is in the preschool programs. Children enter kindergarten way behind the curve. Some children walk in already reading, and other children can't even identify colors. And it's a huge disparity. That can be fixed with early childhood education. Put your funds in that, and you'll see tremendous improvement.
Shadrick.
As a counseling psychologist, we know that early education increased social skills. We know that there's a correlation with the increase in aptitude and a decrease in special educational services. We know that it also increases their attention span. And most importantly is that we know that for kids to start school early, they have enthusiasm for lifelong learning. And finally, there's definitely a correlation with going to school early and going to college. So we definitely need to look at these things.
Ryan. I believe that early childhood education is important. And I think that we need to do a better job as a county to get information out of people and make them aware that we do have things like Head Start, some information, and there are seats that are going to be this year. We need to also look to make sure that we advocate for additional funds to make sure that we can implement this in all areas of the county and not just in the certain areas. Division.
Early intervention services are imperative to the development of academic growth for the child. I think it is disheartening to know that, I know one of the schools in my district, we have a group of volunteers who have actually developed a program in which they have to solicit for donations. That should not be the case. For your Title I schools, you have funds that are available for early intervention services. It is the board that should be making decisions to allocate the funds, and that is what I'm going to do and is a part of my plan.
Catherine.
I'm also going to say, because I'm an evidence-based girl, that we need to invest in pre-K. That said, it's a huge funding issue, and the school board does not control the purse strings. So really, this is an issue that is going to be beside the poles under our fifth vote and vote for board supervisors, candidates that are going to support increased funding for our schools because there is a big price tag that comes with adding a pre-K program. We also need to look at the new school prototype and don't think it includes space for pre-K.
Thank you. We now are going to go to your final statement, and we're going to start, I decided we're going to come this way. Start with Will.
Hello, Gary.
60 seconds.
I just wanted to take this time to say that we're just over a week out from the election, and I've seen so many people work tirelessly and for long days and long hours. I hope that I gave you an opportunity to learn a little bit more about me, but I guess we will see what happens on November 5th. Thank you.
Anne.
Thank you all for allowing us to share our stories and the reasons why we're running for the school board. I believe the school board is a wonderful team, communicates well, and is supportive of each other. An effective school board is made up of a variety of backgrounds and education, but we all have one common goal, and that's to do the best for the students. I believe effective school board members have a love of service, that they have a desire to listen, and they want to achieve results. And those are qualities that I bring to the school board, and I have worked very hard over these past 10, almost 11 months, getting my message out there, and I hope to have your support and votes on November 5th. Can't believe we're almost there. So again, thank you for your time this evening, and thank you.
Dawn.
So, thank you everybody for being here. Thank you again for hosting. I am bringing 10 years of education advocacy to this position, as well as nearly a lifetime of public service. This is my first time running for any public office because this is where my passion is. This is evidenced by my service and my career. I hope to have the opportunity to start on the school board and to continue that service to our community. Thanks.
Erica.
I would just like to say I appreciate everyone for coming out this evening. We have a big opportunity. We have a chance to change the way things have been done. And not to say that everything has been done wrong, but there is room for opportunity. And so, I would say make your choices wisely. If you have any questions for me, please reach out to me at my telephone, by email, phone, message, any way that, all of my information is out on the table. So if you have any questions and you don't catch me actively, please have some say.
Justin. I'm Justin Smith again. I'm running because I think my background best fits this position. This isn't a stepping stone position for me. I'm not looking to run for a higher office after this. Education is something that's very important to me. It's very important to my family. And my mom was a teacher. I've donated over the last six, seven years, many, many hours on weekends, personal time taken off from work for the Center for Civic Education, where we teach kids constitutional law and how to get involved at a civic level. This is something that I'm not just running because I believe my background gives me the best experiences to pull from for this position, but it's something that I've lived, and it's something that I've taught kids in high school in different areas to do. And I'm living what I'm teaching, and I really hope to be able to bring that experience and increase transportation efficiencies and help with providing equal access to education opportunities for our children.
Anne.
After dedicating 34 years to the education of students in Chesterfield County, serving on the school board seemed like the logical next step in my commitment to the young people in Chesterfield. To understand my sincere desire to help our youth, we have to look no farther than the after-school program I started in a community in need. I started the Broadwater Learning Center in 2012 to assist a community of at-risk youth. That program, I'm proud to say, still exists today. I also have the most institutional knowledge of Chesterfield County schools. I've been a teacher, department chair, PBL liaison, team leader, chair of county committees, and I understand the school system's programs, its processes, and its procedures. I would bring a career teacher's voice to the school board, and I think it's time we have a career teacher on the school board that'll put our students first.
Shadrick.
Thank you very much for allowing me to be here tonight and just to talk to you all. I've brought 25 years of educational experience in high education. I've been in Chesterfield County basically all my life. I coached in Chesterfield County, coached many of your kids. I counseled many of your kids. I mentored many of your kids. I've been a very effective person in Chesterfield County. I think that if you want somebody in your school board that cares about their children, cares about the community, I am that person. Along with that, I just love our children. I also had a child who graduated from the school, and I have a daughter that really attended Chesterfield School. So I have a vested interest in Chesterfield County. And I just want to say if you want a person that's going to work hard, do your best, then I'm that person. And I pray you two all get out and vote for me on November 5th. Thank you so much.
Ryan. Well, just like everyone else said, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. I've served 12 years in the United States Air Force, serving around the world in about four different countries, and then coming back and filling the needs in our schools as civics and economics teacher.
and then coming back and filling the needs in our schools as civics and economics teacher. I've always been the type of person that you see an need, you fill it. And this is one of those times again. All five members were leaving the school board, and I think that's important that you have advocates and leaders on the school board who are willing to ask the tough questions and make the difficult decisions. We need to make sure that we are taking care of our students. We need to make sure that we are taking care of our parents, our educators, our paraprofessionals, post-graduates, and finally, our community. Everyone needs to be on board. We need to be inclusive. We need to bring everyone together. And together, we can make the school system that's already great a lot better.
Commission.
Thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity to speak for the people. Dedicating much of my volunteerism to schools and community involvement for four and fifteen years and the need for diversity are the reasons that I have run. I am not seeking a higher platform. I have been doing the work. I have been in the trenches. I have served, I have advocated on behalf of students, on behalf of teachers. I have served, advocated on behalf of families. One thing I have realized in my canvassing is that amongst various groups, regardless of your political affiliation, we have more in common than we do uncommon. I am able to relate to people on all levels, and that is very important. When I mount that board, it is not about politics, it is about the people. That is who I am, that is what I stand for. Serving in your community, not only serve in the Chesterfield County Equity Committee, and I'm also endorsed by the Rishon Association of Realtors, but I represent all people. I am the one who is going to ask the hard, ask questions, and I am going to be driven in order to improve and make our schools the better. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Patrick.
I am not a politician. I've never held party office. I'm a mom. We have sixty-two thousand kids in the Chesterfield County Public School System, and we are receiving less funding after adjusting for inflation than we did post-recession. We have five part-time school board members in most counties of our size. We have better representation on the school board in terms of the number of members, and we have at-large members. Do I wish we had more members? Yes. But I'm an army rat and I'm used to rolling up my sleeves and working with what I have. So this is what I can offer you. I will make this representative my sole career focus for the next four years so I can not only really represent you and be in schools during the day, listening to teachers. I'm in Chesterfield Education Association, endorsed, and listening to your principals and listening to staff and at-the-top staffs, but also at the board's supervising, gaining back trust, building relationships, and in the General Assembly advocating for more funding. We need more funding. We can do it together.
Patrick.
Thank you for this opportunity. Only the question before you is going to be, who's going to have the right priorities and who's going to be able to make the tough decisions? We all know what's best for our school system, but we're not going to get everything we need. You have to ask yourself, who's going to have that experience to handle those tough decisions? During the course of my career, I served in Iraq in Afghanistan where I advised military officers in a life and death situation. For that, I was awarded two Bronze Stars. I was also a US Army Paratrooper, Department of Defense Ethics Counselor. I was a legal advisor for military veterans drafting, reviewing thousands of policies, including the Army Logistics University down the road for the commandant, reviewing naff cadence, students' conduct policies. In addition, I work from home, I'm an attorney that works from home. I call my kids in the bus in the morning, pick them up in the afternoon when they show up on time. You need an unapologetic champion who's going to be here in your community based on real, relevant experience. And that's why I'm asking for your vote on November fifth. Thank you.
Let me just say a few words in closing. First, as everyone has noted on here, thanks to everyone for coming out tonight and watching and screaming. Very, very clear how important these issues are to the future of Chesterfield County. Secondly, I always want to commend anyone who puts in his effort and time to run for public office, and particularly the school system. Because I think, as you heard tonight, for all of these people here, it's really a labor of love. So let's thank them for one piece.
Quickly before everyone leaves, again, I'll thank all of our partners, Chamber RBA, the Zouver, and of course, our team at the Chesterfield Chamber. Secondly, we are videotaping recording tonight, so we will have it live by the time The Observer goes online on Wednesday. So next Wednesday, it will be live. We'll all share it, all three organizations on our social media, so work for that. And you can share it with your community members and so forth. So again, thank you to the stars for the hour, the candidates that are on for school board, and of course, to our moderator and moderator of school boards. Have a good evening.